I'd like to call to order the March 6th meeting of the Short Falls Board of Education. Ms. Lucott, could you please take the floor?
Mrs. Garvey?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Mrs. Bros?
Here.
Mr. Kansinger?
Here.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Here.
Now if y'all please join me and stand and face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so this is one point in our meeting where we invite committee participation and public comment. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to address the board? If so, I have a short statement to read. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to board reports. At this time, I'll go through the list of board committees and the board representatives of those committees can please share an update. If there is no report, just say that there's no report today. So the Audit Committee, Mary Kay?
There was no report.
Thank you. The Board Policy Committee?
The Board Policy Committee will meet next Wednesday, March 13th at 1:00. We will continue our discussion of the policy changes to allow alcohol at designated district locations at designated times. There are new policy drafts distributed if you get a chance and you want to, if you have any feedback that you would like to provide prior to that meeting, if you could share it with Lisa Shannon, that would be great. And we are also continuing our conversation of considering a recommendation to adopt the PE.
Okay, so next Wednesday, 1:00. Where is it going to be? In Sands?
Sands.
Okay. Is Sands going to be available?
As far as I know.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. And then the Business Advisory Committee, Mr. Rankin?
No report there.
Okay. Capital Planning, I gave a report last week about our meeting in February. We had some business on the agenda tonight, development, so I wanted to share a little bit more about, basically, the overview I gave last... Are we having microphone issues?
Although.
Okay. Am I causing something to pass? We did a review of really the ideal amount of funds to have available in the PI budget in order for us to adequately maintain all of our districts' facilities. And Mr. Rankin gave a really thorough overview of several different methodologies for coming up with the appropriate numbers. You're not just kind of going like this. We actually looked at standards from Carnegie Mellon University as well as standards really in all of the business industry of what the proper amount would be. Not surprisingly, the numbers all seem to resonate around the same figure, which is about $2 million a year, which would be an adequate amount for us to have to maintain our facilities. And that doesn't mean you spend that amount in every year. Some years you may need more than that, some years you may need less, but on a steady-state basis, you really want to be allocating about $2 million a year into that budget. We have increased our budget significantly. In this current five-year forecast, we have between 1.25 million and 1.5 million over the course of those five years. So the committee is really looking at what we can do to augment those funds going forward as well as how we can adequately plan for the variability of capital projects by putting these funds aside and saving for a rainy day, so to speak. So one of the considerations was to transfer some of our millage that comes to us through the inside mills into the permanent improvement account. That's one of the things that we'll be talking about this evening. I know Ms. Lucott probably be giving us a much more thorough overview, but I just wanted to give an overarching introduction as where this dialogue is coming from. It was stemming from conversations in that committee on what we need to do to be good stewards of our public buildings. So, and April 11th is the next Capital Planning Committee meeting. That's at 6:30 PM in the Sands community room, if anybody wants to join us. The Board Finance and Budget Committee, Mr. Rankin?
So we're setting up our first committee meeting, going to be late in April. Just trying to find a time that will work for everybody in the committee.
Okay, great. And there's no report for records retention. Okay, at this point, I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Hunt for superintendent's reports.
Thank you. Good evening. As your flexibility, we have the Mills School Book Fair taking over Sands community during the time, so that's why we're down here. Three brief reports this evening. The first is an update on the construction project at the elementary school and a quick review of change order 0023 and 0024. So ask Carrie Ash maybe to start with the update on the construction of the project and then review both of those change orders first.
Good. Everybody? Do you want to update on the Gurnee project first? Did you want to start there? Is that what you?
No, I'm starting with the CFI.
Okay. So what I distributed out was our monthly board report. Have not had a chance to email that, but we'll be getting an email on that tomorrow. So essentially, what's happening in the building, there's a lot going on. So at the new addition, on the third floor, we have the first prime coat and first paint coat going on. We have tile going in the bathrooms and some floor going in the IDF rooms. You'll see ceiling grid has been installed up on that floor. On the second floor, it's kind of following suit as we go down. Drywall is up and is being taped, sanded, and finished, and grid is also going up. And then on the first floor, we have drywall being installed. In the kitchen, we have the walk-in freezer and cooler is being delivered tomorrow, so that'll be going in this week. And we have drywall being installed in the kitchen and this dining area right now. In the 1914 building, up on the third floor, the sound walls and sound ceilings have that sound isolation membrane that you've heard us talk about. That's been installed. The walls are framed. We have a lot of the in-wall roughing already done, and we have overhead MUPs being roughed in at this time. And that is the same thing that's happening on two in the 1914 building. In the auditorium, we started fabricating sprinkler pipe and fabricating ductwork for the above-ceiling roughens, and they're working on those above-ceiling roughens in the auditorium. If you have been in there, you'll... It's hard to see because we have all the scaffolding up, but the old wall covering got removed in some areas as well as the old wall tiles, and the drywall has gone up in its place. And then in the gym, the corridor wall is done and up. We started doing new patching fills on the walls in the gym, and they're starting to do the prep for what eventually will be painted on the gym walls. On the exterior of the building, we are... We will be complete, I'm so happy to say this, with all masonry this month. So it's been a tough winter, so that's extremely exciting. The quality looks amazing. If you've had an opportunity to walk around the building, look at the medallions got installed along with three of those octagonal gym windows. Looks really beautiful on the east elevation. They'll be... I'm sorry, yeah, the east elevation. They'll be moving over to the north about next week. So right now, we're just kind of moving around because the temperatures have been so low, so we're working on smaller areas to tend and to keep it heated. All of your special light doors, which are a lot of your exterior doors, they hold a very long lead time. It's about 10 weeks. Those have all been released. Casework, I forgot, casework is getting delivered this month on the third floor of the new addition, and then the next delivery will follow next month. And then curtain wall is being measured on Friday, so that's about a four-week lead time. So you're going to start to see some glass and curtain wall go up in about 45 weeks. Any questions on the progress?
Can you give an overview of FFE and that bid?
Sure. Actually, two items, thanks very much. FFE went out to bid. I'm very happy to report that we are $100,000, about $102,000 under the allowance now. We met with the architecture team and the pad tractor, and we reviewed every piece of furniture to make sure that the district is happy with the items that were plugged in the bid. And because we were so under budget, we were actually able to select two alternates, two add alternates, and that still keeps us under at that $100,000. So we'll be moving into this middle process. We are awarding contracts this week on FFE, so that's a win. Really excited about that. And then the landscaping package is going out to bid tomorrow, so we should see bids for that about the end of this month.
And I did, with the report last week, you did go to planning and zoning and at the village, and they did approve that we would not need to install the arrectada on the north side of the building. That's federal, so that's added to that planning topic.
Jim, would you mind getting either door? They're polishing the doors in the hallway.
Do we have a date for... Well, is there a tour that I could join on? A tour I'd love to see.
Yeah, I had other business to try to schedule something for the board, so I'm not going to run with that unless you want to be here tonight.
But tonight, no.
I know, you know, several months ago, there were, you know, when you really looked at the budget and trying to, you know, tighten it up, it sounds like quite a bit of casework was cut. And now, was it casework that was cut?
Some of it. I don't, you know, honestly...
So I just wonder if there, you know, if... Do we need, if we have this 102 under in furniture equipment, is there anything that we're missing?
So I actually wanted to speak to the cost. It's a great question. When I look at your classrooms, I would not say, in my opinion, for the schools that we do, I don't think that you have gone under the required amount of casework. I think, quite frankly and honestly, what was eliminated was a wise elimination in terms of a cost savings. I personally would recommend against at this point because you've already gone in the fabrication and you already have your run of casework. Talking budgetarily-wise, yes, we did have savings in FFE, but along with some of that savings, we have run into some unforeseen. We just recently worked through a structural issue of doing MUP penetrations through the existing walls, and we had some unforeseen dollars spent on that. And then another issue we ran into last week are the gym lintels. So you'll see if you walk by the gym, those windows are demoed out and they're tapped in right now. We have the windows to go back in, but when we took them out, the exterior lintel did not look like it was in good shape. So right now, I'm going to be making a recommendation to the school, actually tomorrow morning, that I believe we should replace, speaking with our restoration contractor, replace all the exterior lintels at the gym and then one plate that's... One of the plates at one of the windows is in very bad shape. The other ones are in decent shape. So we've ran into some other things that those savings has helped us from an unforeseen situation. Still monetarily, still monetarily-wise, if you look at the cost control, I think we're , cost control summary in the board report, I think we're doing very well. I still believe that. I feel like every time we've run into an unforeseen, we've been able to offset and really keep the pace, which is very good. So at this point, I actually think you're going to be very pleased when you see a lot of that casework going. You're going to see a lot more than you probably anticipated, to be very honest.
I'll cover up, see, I have 23 and 24.
So 20... Is 24? I thought it was just 23. See if I can...
No, I've got 24.
Okay. So 23. I might need somebody to use 24. 23 is quite large. It involves Bulletin 6 and Bulletin 8 of 100% CDs, Bulletin 6 civil and structural, cambering at 1914, and RFI 250 and stair B demo. I'm going to step you through each one of those. The first item included in this change order was for RFI 372. So at the last board meeting, the change order that I presented had the description for this, but I never collected in the costs. So this change order collects in those costs. That's for those drywall kits that went into the drywall ceiling that were initially specified to go into a drop lid. Bulletin 6, this is some of what Mary Kay was referencing. We did delete some casework in the Makerspace, but we added a display case in there as well. There were some Makerspace changes in Bulletin 6. They added some shelving, a display case. There was also some shelving added to the ramp hall display case. Ramp Hall 149, that's when you go into the auditorium lobby. And then there were some electrical changes as well in Bulletin 6. And Bulletin 6 civil and structural, at the east curtain wall, the structural engineer added some CMU below the windows at the east entrance that was not there before. We also had some added rebar at a detail outside of the kitchen ramp, the ramp up to that kitchen door. There were some changes from Mr. Excavator, but they were $0 cost changes. And then there was a thinking... There was a miscellaneous metals change. We added some C-channel. It was 25 channels at about four feet per an RFI response that went up on the roof above the stage. The fourth item was to camera the 1914 underground. So when the plumbers started working in the 1914 building, some of the items that were shown on the plumbing drawings actually didn't exist in the building, and we're not quite confident that what is there is going to properly connect. So the best way to go was to camera what's there. And so the price that's included in this change is to hire our company to come out and camera that, so we understand what connects to what and we can connect properly for the plumbing plants. So this doesn't include any changes that are going to result of, as a result of that, but it's to camera and find out what's going on. RFI 250, I talked about this at a previous board meeting and talked about a constructibility issue of the back wall of the stage. There was... We had a detail that once we got out there, we looked at that existing wall. I'm not sure if you remember, we talked about this, that wall was undulating, and the detail that showed for us to build back, it would not have worked with that existing condition. So that RFI addressed us, putting the spray foam on, adding a steel channel, and making that detail work because what was previously shown wouldn't have worked with the existing condition, and that's at that backside, the back wall of the stage. The sixth item is the stair B demo. So at the plans, on the plans, the demo, because we were phased, the demo of the stair B roof was not shown, so that was not captured in the GMP. So the wall openings were captured, the steel was captured, all of that was identified, but there was a cut that was not identified, and that was one of the extras in this change The seventh item is for Bulletin 8 100% CDs. There was quite a few deducts in this bulletin. They were items that we captured from our VE session that we made and incorporated into the contract. One of that was eliminating the gym decked-up ceiling. Another item was we changed the ceiling tile, the original specified ceiling tile to a more cost-effective ceiling tile. That was the second item in this. Item three was we went with a different manufacturer for the cornice. We had found, it's an integral color cornice that was originally specified. We were able to find another manufacturer that was able to do that for less money, so that'd be taken. The fifth item is at the stage, because we had a leaking roof problem, and I believe you had it long before we had been there, part of that stage could not be salvaged. And so what we decided to do was demo from the curtain line back, install tungam roof plywood, we're going to paint that black, and then we're going to refinish the front of the stage. So this is for the plywood and demo for the backside. The refinishing of the front was in the leaseback contract. Item seven was to reduce the shaft size in the bathroom. We made it a foot smaller, so there was a credit there. There was a credit for worn roofing to change the roof system at the terrace. So instead of going with that bullet ply, we went with a TPO and a roof paper, so there was a credit there as well. Another item in here was a reduction of some casework in countertops at two elevations. There were some electrical changes as well as, at the backside of the stage, one of the things I think that was noticed in the review is there was now a door, and apparently that was needed for programming. So we added a door and added a step and a little knee wall back there, so there's a cost for that as well. So that was change order 23.
Carrie, one of the reasons to approach this project the way we did is that, when looking at the school years ago, there were plumbing issues, and since plumbing is underground, that was the root of what needed to be addressed. The type of exposure is left in the plumbing under the 1914 before camera scoping it now. Is that...
I don't think it's a huge change. I think it's more of what do we cap, what do we abandon, and what do we connect to? Good question.
But it's not going to be like new, but it will be, all the problems that we had before will be remedied with whatever needs to happen.
Are you ready?
Yeah, well, I'm just wanting to understand that that has already been addressed. It's not that we're now, now that we've built this building on top, we're not now going underground. We scoped the plumbing at our house, and so I sort of understand what you're doing.
It's more finding out, there was a couple of rough in here. They wanted...
It's great, actually.
Sorry, I just was...
Thank you.
Thank you.
So for example, in one room, maybe at the south end of the room, there was supposed to be a floor drain, but it was actually at the north end.
Okay.
Should we cap that floor drain? Oh, well, you know what? I thought that that was connected to this camera, but yes, I think you should cap it. That's more the situation. Thank you. I appreciate it.
So while you're pulling that up, I just want to note that we really appreciate the amount of detail that you give us ahead of time. You're recapping for everybody's benefit, but we've had an opportunity to really look at the detail and the numbers behind all of these change orders. So I just want to make sure everybody is aware that we've had this for a couple of weeks now, or I guess about a week to look at.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I try to be as descriptive by...
No, you give us so much great background information. It's wonderful.
For the next change order, in the description, it's for RFI 395, RFI 288, Bulletin 7 100% CDs, RFI 370, and for the RPR 1 detail. So for RFI 395, it was our miscellaneous metals contractor to demo the existing angle and provide two new galvanized angles at the south elevation. So simply what that means is on the structural drawings, there was an angle specified, but on the architectural drawings, there was a different angle we provided than what was installed on the structural. When they went to go install the window, that angle needed to be a little bit longer, so they needed to make it longer. So we had to take out what was installed for the structural and install a different one for the architectural. RFI 288, at the canopy, some additional C-channel need to be added. That was just a labor. There was no material cost for that. Bulletin 7 is also a mixture of some VE as well as some unforeseen changes. So the first item was at the Mansour roof above the auditorium. The rooper actually suggested this. They did an inspection of the existing roof that was up there, and they thought that it should stay, and we were buying brand-new channels. They thought it was in great condition, and I believe that was about, I want to say about a $25,000 savings on that. So that's one of the VE items that was captured. At the west side of the basement stair, we added a handrail. So if you remember, when you go down to the basement of the 1914 building, we elected to remove one of the stairs that was going to cover the counter. It's a cost savings. And so we left the existing car 3 stair there, but you have to put a handrail for code purposes. So this added a handrail there. And then, of course, the credit to delete that stair and other handrail. At the exterior west side exterior stair, just outside of stair C on the west side of 1914 building, there is a new set of stairs that is going out there and a sidewalk. And at GMP time, we set aside an allowance for the sidewalk and the stair, but it did not cover the handrail. So this is for the handrail to that stair. Also in here is the clean prep, patch, and paint of the three brick walls in the gym. The work was identified in Bulletin 7, but that is being funded via allowance. So the costs are not captured here because that's an allowance, but the work is identified in the scope of that bulletin. So I'm just clarifying for you that you have it now in the contract, but it's being funded Another VE item was that we deleted some cubbies at one of the elevations along with some cobucks. That was one of the VE caseworks that Mary Kay was living to earlier. We had some electrical changes in Bulletin 7. Some of the power to the teaching stations got changed slightly. They were originally roughed in into classrooms, so we just had to go back and make adjustments to the roughing in two of those areas. So those costs for that. In the auditorium, there are carpet aisle lights that are going in at them aisles of each seat, in between seats. And when those aisle lights were added, it changed some of the floor boxes. So the floor boxes for that change are included in here. There are also some mechanical changes which are detailed. Without getting too far into detail, but changing some of ductwork, some of the smoke dampers, some of the transfer duct, all those HVAC changes are detailed in your change order and included in Bulletin 7, along with some glazing changes to change to clear ad eyes bright metal at some of the vestibules. The last item is RPR 1. So at the beginning of the project, we knew that we had to do this infill at the walls, but we weren't quite sure how we wanted to approach it, so we set aside a $5,000 allowance and performed the work on ticket. So the work came in at 10, but then we offset that with the 5, so in totality, it ended up being $5,000 more. What that is, is when you would go into the 1914 building, that your existing exterior walls, wherever you had old pipe, initially, we talked about just filling it with concrete at the floor line, but then eventually, what ended up happening was they want us to form the walls up in core concrete and form a fully fill-up the wall void. So that's the work that happened there. And that's the last item mentioned. Any questions on that one?
Can you do a quick update on that?
Sure. So last, my weeks are running together, but I believe it was last week, it was around the 28th, I walked with the contractors at Gurnee and the high school, and we took the drawings and just went through all the details, kind of with a fine-tooth comb, to make sure that any questions were addressed before we got the pricing. We did have some questions. I sent them over to Ryan, TDA and his team, and I believe actually, I think all of them got answered today. I know half of the architectural were answered yesterday, and I believe there was a conference call today with my Dordy to answer the balance of the questions. So I'm going to give the trades about one more week to put their numbers together with the questions that got answered, and then I should be receiving the pricing in about seven days for that.
Any questions on that, Karen? All right. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. I'm sorry, I forgot my change order. Thanks. Embarrassed.
Okay, and the is just a quick update on master planning. That committee met and we did conceptual drawings of Gurnee and the high school as well as some of the grounds in terms of traffic patterns, bus garage, things of that nature. This, I put in a board report, or delayed it a bit on this because TDA would like to wait until the UHOP school facilities report comes out. I believe the timing on that is early April to get a better understanding of the construction costs through a report. So what I provided to you tonight is an update that we worked through, Chris and Ryan, to ensure that the board had an idea of when this thing would come to fruition. What is left in this process, there's going to be final meetings with the high school and Gurnee staff where we roll back some of the designs based on some of the feedback that services committee gave to TDA. They, again, waiting on that updated cost report. Cost estimates will be... Cost estimates will be given to us and we anticipate that'll be ready to go in early May to present to the Board of Education on May 17. I do want to discuss kind of the livable to make sure we're all on the same page in terms of what our expectations are of what is coming from TDA. Obviously, there will be conceptual designs, most specifically to the high school and the middle school. You have all seen the traffic pattern recommendations on the high school campus, the traffic pattern recommendations on the Gurnee campus as well, recommendations on the bus garage and maintenance facilities, cost estimates with all of those projects. We did talk about at the meeting, trying to break up the high school number a little bit into different kind of sections and areas and other words. You know, high schools with names in locker rooms, media center offices, those types of things, so we will work on that as well. We'll provide an updated FCI for every building, so the board has that information as well. And then prioritization, but some of that is going to be kind of conversation and decision point for capital planning and this Board of Education at some point. So we kind of took away from our last meeting to take a look at PI projects for the next five years, maybe the next 10 years, see what our cost savings would be if we didn't do those projects and we went after one of these buildings, so we can kind of hatcher that data. I don't anticipate all of those decisions kind of being made. I think those are board level decisions, but that information will be there to help guide us kind of moving forward. And obviously, we talked about costs associated in construction and renovation. So those are the components that, you know, we have articulated and foresee bringing forward to Board of Education. I'm hoping to get something early May so I can kind of get it in your hands with at least a week. We're going to have to digest it before we kind of dig into the conversations around that. Any questions on facility master planning?
So your intention is for all of this, thank you, by the way, for pulling this information together.
Sure.
Very helpful. For it to go to capital planning first?
I'd like to...
And to talk the prioritization.
Yeah, I'd like to get that group to kind of dig in and weigh into this. I just don't know how it's going to fit with that April 11th meeting, so I'll have to talk to Ryan a little bit about that. You know, I guess worst case scenario, if we don't get it to that group, we would share at least an update for board on May. Here's what we have. It's got to go through that group and be vetted. I think most, most of this is where, you know, we're kind of a year out now. We've done our capital planning, we've done our budgeting, you know, you've approved that for next year on May 17. We're also to bring that five-year plan for capital improvements. That may or may not happen based on the pace of this as well, because capital planning is going to want to really see what the master planning committee has come up with and see how that plays into what they've kind of budgeted thus far in terms of the five-year plan.
So is it fair to say that it's unlikely that this will impact the May five-year forecast update, but more likely that it will be incorporated into the October five-year forecast?
I think that's, I think that's more likely, yes. We know, obviously, we know what we're going to budget and put away for next year in the PI. We have figures in the five-year PI plan now that I'm sure Candy will utilize in the forecast. That may even change then based on, you know, let me just throw it out. If we want to try to tackle the bus garage, that will move and change how we go about, you know, those projects moving forward.
So just add a little bit of detail for those board members tomorrow on the Facility Committee that one of the things that became apparent in Ryan's update was that there may be projects, as Bob alluded to, that could be encapsulated and captured in our current PI expenditure. So there are projects that we can parse out as their own entities that may be within our current budget without going back to the taxpayers for us to tackle and get completed in. It seemed like there were more of them at the high school. For example, I think the gym, the locker rooms was an example, although at Gurnee, we talked about the bus garage as being... So that's one of the things that the committee wanted to look at was instead of packaging all these together and saying, we've got into a bond issue, we're going to wait, what can we do? Because we need to get into a habit of, I guess, a practice of these, even if it's a million dollar project, planning for that and finding the funds for that within our regular budgeting process. So that's what you meant by kind of separating out some of the high school projects which seem to be more applicable?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that, at least in where we're at today with what kind of was brought forward with Gurnee.
Right.
I think that's a more, kind of a major project that we would have to work at. When, when does that make sense to go back to the community for that? Any questions there? Okay, last item on the report, we've got C.W. Edo here. Tim's been working with the district for quite a few years in various roles. As the Board of Education knows, Governor Dewine now, I mean, he used to say that, Governor Dewine allocated some money for public schools for safety and security. Our number was around $12,000, I think, when it was all said and done. We allocated some of those funds to have Tim come in and do an audit of our school district to really look at, you know, where we stand, some things that we're doing well, and then help us identify areas for improvement. So he conducted, completed that report. The board has a copy in the agenda tonight of the recommendations of that report. It's a much lengthier document that we'll share out at some point, but you've got copies of the recommendations. I also passed out for the board tonight, we had our safety committee come together last, last week, two weeks ago, and review these recommendations and then give us some feedback from their perspective on these recommendations as well. So you do have that information in front of you this evening. I think what you'll hear is, you know, we're doing some things very, very well. Some of the recommendations, you know, are on our radar and in conversation about, but certainly appreciate the attention and work, and I want to turn it over to you to talk the Board of Education through those recommendations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hunt, and thanks for inviting me to the meeting tonight. When I was with Ohio Homeland Security, I had over 1,200 schools that I had to deal with. I think 1,199 of them, like the B-word, we died. So I make a joke with Chris, whatever he is, that you're my platinum club. And I was surprised when he asked for the assessment because usually the schools that ask for these things, they won't go there. But anyway, yeah, at my age, I have an annual physical and I'm always kind of worried if I walk in the door, what's it going to be like? Thankfully, it's always, gee, Mr. Hunt, I've been here for a man of your age, you're in excellent condition. You could lose some weight and you should exercise more. So I think to put it in a nutshell, for a district your age, you're an excellent help, you could lose some weight and exercise more. I think some of the positive things that I observed was the excellent relation that you have with the Shreve Falls Police Department. It's just phenomenal. And I can't begin to tell you how many other communities wish they had something at this level. Mr. Hunt said I'd been coming here a long time and a lot of times when I was here having meetings, the Shreve Falls police was represented. Somehow you work out of the way to have an SRO in your high school, middle school, and again, that's real too. It's not that common in college economy, actually, so you're kind of, you know, from the lead up. And experts all over the country, you know, that's the first thing they say, if you can find a way to get an SRO in your school, you know, that's one of the primary things that you ought to be doing because it really creates a presence and it gets the police to know the kids and it can put a lot of things in happening because you've got somebody there that has their trust and has a relationship with them. When I first started coming here, this is one of these campuses where, you know, they're serious about security as soon as you pull in the driveway. And I can't tell you how many times I've been jacked up around here by teachers or even a bus driver a few weeks ago, you know, sir, can I, can I help you? Can I help you? So I think, you know, they're very tuned up here about, you know, confronting people in a nice way, about why are you doing anything like... This is one of the few school buildings that I've walked through on several occasions where I've never found a door front. And that is incredibly rare and again, kudos to you and your staff. Somebody's getting a message out and the folks are doing a great job of that. I think one of the things that really surprised me, and this is again, something everybody else wishes they had, is that if this building was on lockdown and the police and the patrol cars had to get in here and get inside this building, nobody's ever thought about, well, how are we going to get in if the building's locked down and, you know, nobody can come to the front door and a lot of men, well, you folks have solved that issue that police have keys to your buildings. And this, again, this is kind of rare. So again, kudos to you for doing this. Another thing is that we've done a lot of assessments now and I'm astonished when I ask schools like, well, when was the last time somebody did an shooter train here? We get these embarrassed folks like, F-shooter train? You folks are very much on top of that again. Shreve Falls is over here kind of doing refreshment training on a regular basis. So again, Shreve Falls, you know, takes the lead. Have you heard, have you heard all the good stuff yet? As Superintendent said, I think you're going to get the tone here sooner or later. If you have trouble falling asleep, it's a great read. But again, when I first came here, I thought, gosh, am I going to find anything to write about that's remotely negative? I think one of the things that we want to talk about, things that need to get done, I think we're all disappointed that we applied for a grant to upgrade the communications to get more radios and that got turned down. I'm surprised that happened because you do need them. I was participating in a reunification program you guys did last summer, again, a very rare event. I don't know of anybody in circle practices in real life, even on small scale, but we did it and it went very well. But you learned a lot of lessons there and one of the most, our communications could be more effective, particularly diplomatically. And, you know, one of the things we've learned from these past horrific experiences, the first thing that goes down is communications. And we all rely on our cell phones and guess what? They're not going to work if something real bad happens. So the backup would be our school radios. And that's when, do we have enough of them? Can the, can the radios here at the high school talk to the intermediate school, the Gurnee and so forth? So I think that's something that, you know, maybe if some money falls out of the sky again from Governor Dewine, then maybe we can get some radios. But I think that is really a priority for you and you save the money like you're, I think maybe the connectivity will show up. Another thing in terms of money would be hardening your entrances for your high school and Gurnee. You know, unfortunately, the state government really doesn't set standards. I mean, there's no regulation, especially even having to have a lock on your front door. So when you do these assessments, it's hard to measure whether you're meeting state standards or not because in this particular realm, there really aren't any state, state standards. But schools that can get the money, schools that are concerned about security, the way it's going now, the trend is if we can, a security vestibule at the front entrance, you know, this is a good thing. It really reduces the risk of somebody coming into the building and doing bad things. What you have now isn't bad, but I think it could be improved. And again, this is where, good thing you got Chris because you have to do some shopping around about getting a good deal about how this stuff gets constructed because I've encountered some school systems where they've done this reengineering at a very good rate and others they spend some amount of money on it. But the whole idea is just to slow people down, make it a little difficult for them to get into the building. Let's talk about some free stuff now. There's something called the Sandy Hook Foundation.
Can I just ask a question? When you, about this length of around the security vestibule, you're just referring to the high school current?
Yeah, your high school's passable.
And the new intermediate school will have one and were, so, and were currently, really planning on that for Gurnee.
So that was part of the empty...
Gurnee and high school.
Was standing and both Gurnee and Gurnee this summer?
Yes.
So they're, they need to be done and we're doing them.
Yeah, I know. I mentioned my disappointment, why were all this, this bill was already in the works?
I didn't know if what you were recommending was above and beyond.
Yes, no, so your psychic powers are working fine. You're way ahead of me.
Did you review the plans that are in place for those vestibules?
No.
I wonder if that might be warranted before we engage, you know, with actual construction?
Yeah, you have to, but, you know, when they're putting up new buildings, that's what you're doing. And if you're in a position where you can run up a bigger old building at a reasonable expense, you know, I would recommend you do it. You know, some of these school districts have buildings that were put up, Teddy Roosevelt was president. And then you get into these things where boards have to weigh, well, do we sink a lot of money in these old structures or is it time to tear it down and build a new? Because if you really start going through the shopping list, you could really run up a pretty good bill. So usually, our practices, we're trying to find things that are either low cost or free. And one of the things you could do for free is to really investigate some of the programs that Sandy Hook Foundation offers. And you've already got involvement in one of them that was just sale. There's another one out there where they train staff on behavioral assessments. This is for the kids, the older kids, middle school kids, high school kids, where your training teachers and administrators that if a student starts displaying, you know, behaviors that, hmm, maybe we need to keep an eye on this person. The second part being that if somebody gets on that list, you know, what do we do? What kind of interventions are possible? If we've got something happening that's bad now. They've done this in some school districts in Ohio already. They claim it's really been successful. It's not only for potential active shooters, but also suicides. Sandy Hook's done a lot of studies on this and I was surprised to learn from them that there's twice as many kids that are killing themselves that are being murder victims over the same period. And again, this behavioral assessment, it tries to identify children risk. It's free, there's no expense involved. Of course, it involves some staff time with the training, but again, it might be something you might want to investigate. Another thing is you folks have signed on to the NAVI services, which is excellent. And I have to commend Superintendent Hunt, I think this is one of the few districts where you have enough staff that are willing to put the applications on their personal cell phones. Because in other areas I visit, you know, it's the kids who go to labor issues where, you know, put that on iPhone unless you pay for my phone. It looks magic here, sir. And it's very effective. It really kind of gets us away from carrying buckets full of attendance sheets and flip charts and so forth. And all the things that you could do the old fashioned way, paper and pencil, can be done much more quickly with this telephone app. So God forbid we would ever have an incident here, we have to start finding people, you know, they have an attendance application, a reunification application. I think you're probably the only district in the state that's actually tested that for real in our most recent probe, so kudos to you again. There's a lot I can talk about, but Chris wanted to keep it down to 10 minutes. I'm going to put one more thing in here. This is a freebie. Somebody's going to have to give up their parking lot upfront because I would love to see the SRO park that marked police car where somebody coming in from the outside, ooh, the police are here today. So, and again, we want to have that high visibility. It's just, it's been a proven deterrent. It's not just for this type of thing, but, well, I'm sure if you're driving down the highway and you see a state cruiser in the crossover, everybody slows down, right? So that's the reason why we make that.
Did you not see that when you have visited? Because I've seen cruiser in the stadium driveway almost, I mean, very regularly during arrival and dismissal, they'll have, it might not be our SRO, but it'll be another police vehicle. But you didn't witness that when you were...
No, I don't either. Usually I'm trying to explain who I am to some...
Sure. Is that accurate for me? I feel like it's pretty regular.
Yeah, they do. Officer Baldwin took the parts of the corner of this building a lot of times during arrival of this one, and even during the day sometimes, and of course, he's a Gurnee in the, in the triangle there.
Right.
The arrival and dismissal. in the triangle there, the arrival and dismissal, he's often there, so maybe he was a gurney down here. And then he parks out of his lot, there's a space he parks out of his lot, maybe not quite as visible, but definitely see him if you're coming in.
I know that the Shadrin Falls Police Department patrols very regularly during arrival and dismissal, so they're in the vicinity, if they're not on school property?
You're very fortunate here.
We are.
I guess my value to you is that I get to see what goes on every whores else. I wish you could see that too, because I think, well, I'm sure you already appreciate what goes on here, but you'd have to keep our appreciation. You know, these folks are doing a great job. You know, I think you have to, like, in some sense, make a decision, is this going to be the U.S. Embassy of Beirut, or is it going to be the school?
Right.
And that's where we have to have the way, balance.
We, fortunately, it's been a little while since we even had a false threat, but I wonder, is there a regular update communication with the students, a reminder of the safe Ohio number? We got that a lot, not only last year after.
Yeah, I mean, it's posted in buildings and around. I couldn't speak to how often it's kind of shared, the announcements. We did talk to the regional principals about keeping that as a consistent piece in your newsletters and things of that nature. And the vast majority of those tips have come from adults, and some have been very helpful. But, so, it's free, it's a nice piece for us, and I think it's one of those things you can never maybe do enough to get it out there.
Well, I think for, for me, my experience having a conversation with the students gave my students a sense of control too, and having them recognize that they're more likely to see something or hear something, and that it's a safe way for them to communicate it, took some fear roll as well.
Yeah, I think that's why I saw, she picked the right person in the SRO. They got the personality where kids will trust them, team that keeps them up. Because you know, I'm a big labor and chip lines, and I think Ohio has a good one, but the more redundancy you have built into that type of approach, the better. And I think a lot of it is your community culture as well. We're doing an assessment right now in a certain large city, not too far from here. I don't think anybody would say anything. And that kind of scares me, because it's just the mentality, you don't talk to the police, and you don't rat other people out. It's quite concerning.
So some of the big takeaways for us going kind of into the spring, from your perspective, you know, you do an audit like this, and I imagine from a board perspective, it's okay, how do we move the ball kind of forward? We do have a presentation from our mental health work, that DEI committee that's coming to the board this spring with recommendations, the layout work for the next three years in that area. Mental health is a big issue, I think every school district is facing it, and you'll kind of see what we've done there and some recommendations, so I think that'll show some progress. I know Chris is working on the radio piece, in fact, I think he was passing a few out yesterday at the principal's meeting. You know, that's just a, you know, a cost item, it's how fast and how much can we do at a time? We'll continue to move forward in that. I think we did, with the incident, we did have, a year ago, two years ago now, when we had kind of the entire police force from, it seemed like every vicinity in Ohio, report to our district with helicopters and all that, yards. Communication is an issue, and I think it's a very fair, you know, criticism or recommendation that we're working on and will continue to. So those are a few things that are on the horizon that will also door project, and will keep this going. The other piece of this is we did form this safety committee, and part of it really is just an accountability piece for the school administration to just keep this at the forefront. I think what you find with these mass shootings is a lot of attention comes after from parents in concern, and then as it kind of goes away, you know, the attention goes away. So the goal of this group is to quarterly come together, discuss what we're doing, discuss areas of vulnerability, and continue to always look to improve in these areas. And you're right, it's a balance of who and what we want to be in terms of our school buildings, and how far do we want to go? And I don't think the conversation ever ends. So I appreciate the work, Tim, and I will, we will forward the board, the entire report, so you can get into a little more depth. But we wanted to give you an overview tonight, and I think it gives you some background into some of the things we are doing, some why behind some of the things we're doing as well. We appreciate you being here.
I'd like to just make one comment. I appreciate this so much, but something that I always think about is like, okay, I think we got a good handle of what goes on in the school day. What do you do at night? You know, when you have a basketball game, a football game, or even, you know, like last night I had a meeting and I was wandering around the middle school, and I'm like, I mean, I, what do you do?
This is a trending topic. I think a lot of the pioneering work has been done in the city areas in cotton county, like East Cleveland, and Cleveland, they have a very robust procedure for after-schools events, but I don't know if that would be a good match for Shadrin Falls, because you're going to go through metal detector, nobody's bringing a backpack, and if you're under a certain age, you're not coming to a game without your parents. They have a huge police present, and that costs money. So you're sacrificing other things, because we have to hire up the cops to, you know, have high profile at these games. One of the things they're also doing is they have school security officers that work in the school during the day, at these games in the evening, and they're getting away with it. I mean, they go out for the game, and they said, oh, you know, we've been acting up, we're worried about you not coming in, you're acting like that. So, you know, they're extreme measures, I think. I don't know if that would be a good fit for here.
We do have officers at a lot of events, but.
It's, yeah, it's being talked about. And another aspect too is busing, because I raised my hand in Sheridan, I live in Jackson Township, so this stuff follows me around for some reason. I know we had the community meetings in Jackson. You would have thought, if they had a school levy the next day, it would have passed overwhelmingly, as you said, it was three months later when the election came, you'd forget it, you know? And all these people that were cranked up just seem to disappear. But if we had a serious rumor where they wanted armed guard on every school bus, and these kids wouldn't get wandered before they stepped on the bus, I mean, this is how afraid people were. But you know, this is a topic that we'll come up and do in the future.
I think there are some, that's how far do you want to go? I think there are a few things we can look at, school wise, and, you know, involving with even training and staff that we currently have onsite, securing, you know, making sure gates are secured. I know I come up here for a basketball game, and I can, you know, kind of get right in, you know, here, so that I think we probably can look at for sure. But again, it's going to come down to balance with these facilities. We've always taken the route that these facilities are community facilities, we'll want to keep them as open as possible as we can, so it's going to certainly be balanced.
If I could just say one thing, I'm sorry to take up so much time, but I used to work in a country called Curvisia, this was one of the Soviet republics, and they destroyed the U.S. Embassy, they were the old one, so the golden new one, it's basically a concrete cube, there's no windows in it, and it's surrounded by different lines of razor wire. It takes you half an hour to get into the place, because you get back and clean and so on and so forth. If you're in that building, you're perfectly safe, but the problem is you're an embassy, you're supposed to interact with the local government, right? The local officials won't go there for meetings, because they find it insulting to go through that kind of a process, because you step into that device that looks and should make it. It's Muslim country, it's not going to happen. So what happens is the staff has to leave that building to go into downtown Bishkek for their meetings, and that's where all this stuff happens. So I mean, you can create a perfect capsule, but sooner or later you have to leave the building. And this is where you have to talk about balance.
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate you being here. And we'll continue to, you know, highlight these recommendations as we're making progress as well. That would conclude my report.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. At this point, I'm trying to meet you over to Ms. Luke Pott for the treasurer's.
Thank you. And thank you for this opportunity to present some additional information to you on the resolution to move inside millage to permanent improvement. At tonight's meeting, you received a draft of that resolution that was prepared for us by our council, but really just to begin the discussion about the process. So, thank you for this opportunity. We all know that this initiative is also consistent with our district's goals of growing a foundation for future learning, and our stewardship as guardians of these publicly owned facilities. Again, these belong to our community, and how do we maintain them? All treasurers like to start at the beginning. And so we get excited to talk to you about what a mill is. A mill is a factor applied to the assessed or taxable valuation of real and personal tangible property to produce tax revenue. You probably discussed this at length every time you go for a school levy, but a mill is defined as one tenth of a percent, or one tenth of a cent in cash terms. Mill is equal to a dollar of tax for every thousand dollars in assessed value. The inside millage is provided by the state of Ohio's constitution and is levied without a vote of the people. That's where you get the term inside mill, because it's inside the law. The constitution allows for up to 10 mills of inside millage in each political subdivision. These inside mills are not subject to House Bill 920, so their, House Bill 920 reduces the tax charged by a voted levy to offset increases in the value of real property. So again, not applied to your inside mills. The next slide shows you a chart of Shadrin Falls millage. At the top, I highlighted the four and a half inside mills, as well as the 8.15 total mills levy for debt service on our bonds. And the voted current expense operating mills for the district is 111.45. This chart shows when each new millage was added, and it highlights the inside millage at the top, that is not reduced, again, per House Bill 920 on any class of property.
Can I ask a question now? The inside mills, I know there's 10 inside mills that we got to share with the other political entities within our area. Does that number, like, so, and the school district is the largest tax entity, we get 4.5. Can that number change if something happens?
Only if there are undesignated mills within that 10 mills.
Okay.
So I believe in both Cuyahoga and Geoghi County, all 10 of those mills have been designated.
Yeah, and so they can't say, oh, no, we have to give more to this one, the library needs more, and okay.
And who determines the absolute designation of the 10? Is it the sort of?
I believe it's at the county level. I believe the county level determines the distribution of that. But there are some counties where not all 10 mills are designated, so a political subdivision can go out there and request that.
And in Cuyahoga, and Geoghi, all 10 are?
Mm-hmm. Right, because, and these counties are a little bit different, if you look at both Geoghi and Cuyahoga County, the distribution of what the county, what the township or city would receive, and then Cuyahoga has some going to the legal library as well.
Okay.
So why this resolution? You were all involved in the facility's capital planning committee in February, where the resolution to move inside millage from current expenses to permanent improvements was discussed, because it was a way to dedicate a revenue stream to meet the needs of the capital plan. One of the discussion points was that non-dedicated general funds can be used for other operating expenses at any time, and at times when there's not enough general operating funds, a lot of times deferred maintenance is a result of that. The committee also discussed other actions to fund permanent improvements, including continuing to allocate general funds via the transfers to permanent improvement funds, general fund transfers to a capital projects fund, 070, and also pursuing a permanent improvement levy. So this was just one of the options that we discussed on February 13th. So how can dedicated PI funds be spent? Again, the Shadrin Falls School District utilizes two board planning committees in the areas of facilities. The facility master planning committee develops a long-term vision for the district's facilities, and the facility's capital improvement committee annually evaluates capital improvement recommendations exceeding $25,000 to ensure the alignment with the master plan, priorities of the district, and budget constraints. For the 1819 Facility Capital Improvement Committee, they approved about $1.3 million in projects, including entrances, HVAC, roofing, security, and pavement projects. Permanent improvement funds can also be used to purchase school buses, and vehicles, and capital equipment with a useful life greater than five years. So how much money does the district receive from inside millage? I worked with both the Geoghi County auditor and the Cuyahoga County fiscal office to put this information together on this chart, to give you an idea of how much money the district generates from the four and a half inside mills, and then how much is collected each year. The collection rates are a bit higher in Geoghi County area, but historically, the district has collected between 2.2 and 2.4 million from the inside millage. So what is the impact of the five-year forecast? The highlighted rows are the line items that will be impacted by this inside millage move, beginning in fiscal 2020. Because the collection will begin in January 2020, it will only be half-realized in the fiscal year 2020, which runs July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020. Similar to when a new levy takes effect, the first fiscal year will only see the increased collection in the second collection of the fiscal year, which is the first collection of the calendar year.
Candy, I'm sorry, just on the last slide, the difference between the last two columns is people who haven't paid their taxes, right? Prior slide?
Correct.
100%.
The collection rate is the difference between the total amount of collection, or, I'm sorry, the total amount of tax we should receive and then was actually collected. There's a delinquency factor in there for any foreclosed properties or any delinquent property.
So I'm going to start going to it. But it's probably also people challenged, challenged, and got their tax reduced, it's probably not reflected, it doesn't catch up.
I'll tell you, in the Geoghi County area, it's, the delinquency's not even 2%, so their collection's over 98%. And in Cuyahoga County, they certify with 96%. So it's, again, very small.
Thank you. Sorry.
And then it is tracked eventually when it is received, the district does see that on our tax degree. So again, going back to, going back to the impact on the five-year forecast, depending on the amount of inside millage that's moved to PI, the district would see a decrease in that property tax revenue line, 1.010, and the corresponding decrease in total revenue down below in 1.070. In addition, the district would see a decrease in expenditures in row 5.010 because of operating transfers out. This is the line where the transfer of funds to permanent improvement is budgeted. And again, I think it's worth noting that the five-year forecast is a forecast of general funds only, does not include other funds in the district, so any of your permanent improvement, debt service, any grants, special resources, student activities, none of those funds are included in the five-year forecast. But just a note about that operating transfer outline, it wouldn't be a clear one-to-one because that line- because that line also includes all district transfers. So the district also makes transfers for athletics, science olympiate, honor society, band, stadium, house build, 264 debt, so you would still see an amount budgeted in the forecast there on that line.
Right, but if, all things considered, if all those stayed the same, and if the only delta was the inside millage, then it would one for one, right? If everything else stayed the same?
The district would still make operating transfers out to other programs.
Right, but the change that we'd see on 1.010 and 5.010 would be the same. So that's just the two places that we'd see, right?
Yes. So what is the impact to taxpayers? Taxpayers would not see an increase to their taxes. They continue to pay the same total millage, the change is only the restriction on the use of the revenue generated on that millage. The district's effective millage is also significantly above the 20-mill floor, so therefore not resulting in an unvoted tax increase. So this resolution would not have an impact on taxpayers seeing any new taxes.
So Candy, is it safe to say then it's just reallocating funds from one bucket to a separate bucket that's specifically allocated for permanent improvement?
Reallocated and restricting.
And how would they see it? I mean, I'm just, I'm curious, I was looking at my Cuyahoga property taxes, and I have property in Illinois, and it breaks down for me, you know, like, how much is going to the library, how much is going to schools, stuff like that, but in Cuyahoga County, it's just, it's a big number. You know, I don't see the breakdown, so...
The county auditors vary in how they present that information to taxpayers. Geoghi County presents it a little bit differently. If you look at their website, and you may not live in Geoghi County, but their website does provide a calculator, an online calculator, that you can do that. It actually comes right out and says, "Where do my tax dollars go?"
Yeah, and it'll tell you what's going to the library, what's going to your township, what's going.
Interesting, alright.
You're welcome to put my address in and put my ...
So, okay, so if I lived in Geoghi and if we pass this, you would see a whole, you know, a new line item, and you would see things move, although the total would stay the same, no?
No, you're not going to see this at all on the county website, this is a district transfer.
Okay, okay, got it.
So the taxes the school collects will stay the same?
Right.
It's just how we're using, how we're putting it in different buckets will change, which I don't think taxpayers will see.
Okay, so even in Geoghi, we wouldn't see it on the property tax bill?
You don't see it on your property taxes because it's still going to the schools. So the designation on there is whether your money's going to the schools, the township, the county, the library, this is still money going to the schools.
Gotcha.
So what are your next steps? Obviously, tonight is the board discussion, you can take action after that. You were provided with a copy of the resolution. Once it's approved by this board, it would be certified to both the Cuyahoga County Fiscal Office and as a courtesy to the Geoghi County Auditor's Office, so they would also know what our plans are. The May update to the five-year forecast would need to reflect a reduction of inside millage property tax revenue and may reflect then the corresponding reduction of expenditures to the general fund. And then, again, collection begins in January 2020 regardless of when you make this change. So you can make this change anytime up through November, the county would still accept a resolution certifying this, the same as if you passed a levy in November. So the process for shifting inside millage to PI millage involves the board action and the resolution that was drafted by our legal counsel at Squires, Patton Bog. The recommendation for approval coincides with the recommendation to approve the 2020 tax rate resolution, and that can be drafted to reflect this move as well. So both resolutions, one to move inside millage and one to accept the Cuyahoga County Fiscal Office's tax rates for 2020, would be recommended for approval at the March 20th meeting, so both of them at the same time. The resolution to move the inside millage, though, sent to both counties, our tax rates for collection each year, again, we would give a courtesy notice to the Geoghi County Office. But regardless of the board's decision to move the inside millage, the tax rate resolution would be recommended for approval at the next March meeting to meet the April 1st deadline to return it to Cuyahoga County. Okay, so we need to take that action at the next meeting. And then that can be amended at any time to reflect a future board action, again, up until that November deadline.
So if we didn't decide tonight to do the board action on the, moving the money, we're still going to, we're going to do the, accept the tax rate thing, and we, no matter when we, if we did that, March 20th, April, May, as long as it's done before year end, since nothing's going to change till January.
Correct.
Do you have to approve the new tax rates for the county? Would you have to go back and re-approve the tax rates for the county?
You get it, you adjust the...
You would have to do an amended tax rate resolution. But either way, you need to pass a tax rate resolution by April 1st.
Right.
So you'll be doing that at the next meeting. And I've spoken to the county fiscal office in Cuyahoga County, and he was willing to be as flexible as possible with us, so as we make a decision in March, or if we don't make a decision in March, either way, with the tax rate resolution. He can have it drafted either way. And then just, again, any questions regarding this move?
I am totally in favor of separating, restricting some money, I think it needs to be done. My only, I really don't think I would be ready on March 20th, just because we have a five-year forecast update coming in May, and I would really like to see that we have good starting numbers. Because I had a great talk with Candy earlier this week. Do you remember last meeting, I was asking questions about, "Wait a minute, we only collected 2 million, and it was, and the budget said 4.5, and then I'm not seeing that going forward." I think just Candy and Ann had a different approach to things, and right now, the auditor and me can't tie out what my ending number, where my ending number is. So I would really love to see that on the five-year update, you know, the five-year forecast update, okay, we're starting with a good number. And I mean, I can, I can show you guys if you want to see what I'm talking about, the numbers, some numbers just aren't tying out. And that's one thing I do every month, I get the SM1 and the SM2, and I look at the number, and I like, see where we are, and I track it to our five-year forecast. And right now, we're a couple million under. So I think it's a timing difference.
Candy thinks it's probably a timing difference.
Taxpools went out late, we collected 2 million in January, but at one point, the estimate said we were going to collect 4 million, but I'm, but it's not, it hasn't rolled forward. So I'm like, was the $4 million estimate wrong, or is it a timing difference? And until I get that answer, I'm not ready to, you know, if we're 2 million, if that was, if there was a mistake on the last five-year forecast, then I'm like, ugh, okay.
But isn't this, in essence, just taking the money that we were already putting aside for PI, and we're just taking it directly into PI, so it won't affect...
Well, yes, but if, this is my concern, let's say we have a $2 million error, we might have to go our levy, and we're, we haven't talked about when our next levy is, for sure. We, you know, when we passed one in 2017, we said, we know three years, but, you know, we're hoping to go four. But if all of a sudden, in May, I'm going to be like, no, we've got to get that levy a little sooner, I wouldn't have wanted to just make this change, because then I, that's too much at once to have to try to educate people on. So I just, I just really need comfort on where we're going to end up, you know, in May, but maybe even...
We even think by March 20th.
We might know because we wouldn't have gotten, you know, the collections in February, we don't have that, you know, the treasury books aren't done yet. If the collections in February were enough to offset that $2 million shortfall that I'm seeing right now, I'll be like, okay, but right now, the projection is not.
Candy, I'm sure the same, I'm sorry.
We talked a little bit about that SM1, SM2 report, which is intended to track your actuals against the projection. Your projection should tie to your five-year forecast, and we can start looking at that in a different way to make sure that it does. And I think at the March 20th meeting, we talked about this, at the March 20th meeting, you'll see your February financials. I closed February today, so...
Good.
Don't have, you know, the whole picture yet.
Right.
Haven't seen all the reports. But we closed February today, you'll see reports for that meeting, and then, we should also by the 20th have received all of our property taxes. So by then, we should know what our total was.
So, is that what you're going to have me answer?
I can tell you we don't have settlements right now.
So, to understand, Mary Kay, your concern is, if there is an issue, this would restrict funds that we couldn't utilize if we were a problem?
Right, we might want them for operating. I mean, I really think, this is the auditor and me, trust but verify, and I just, like, if I look at the, if anyone wants to go back to last month, if you pull up your, you know, in the February meeting, we had the January financials, when we collected 2 million in property tax revenue. But if I go back and look at the budget, it was supposed to be 4 million. So then I'm like, well, okay, it's going to be a timing difference. But then I went and looked at the SM2, and the monthly estimate where it used, it was 4 million is zero, and so it's showing that, oh, we had, for the month, we were ahead $2 million. No, that number, zero, we used to say 4 million. So there's just, it's just, I think, different people using the report differently, but there's just some, so I can't tie, some numbers I can't tie in, which is what I typically do every month, so I just...
So up our 24 million or so in revenues for this year, we might be under by 2 million, is your concern?
Yes, that's my concern.
But next year, there's no reason to think that next year's an issue, so we're talking about it.
No, which means, which means we're going to end 2 million less, which means we're starting, we're, you know, giving a whole...
I understand, but it's not cumulative or pervasive.
Unless, unless there's other issues. But I just, I don't know, that 4 million that we were supposed to collect in January became a 2 million, and I don't, and I'm not getting any explanation just yet, which I think we're going to have it, I think we'll have it soon.
So, so I think part of the crux of this is, so let's assume that we are $2 million under. Would we, as a board, then say we're not going to do any permanent improvements next year?
No, but we would look and say, oh, okay, when do we think we need a levy? What do we, I mean, that might, we, and also, we also have a different person doing our five-year forecast. Maybe every treasurer's going to look at things differently, and Candy's sitting in lots of meetings, she might identify something else. So I just want to make sure, like, right now, I think we're so focused on permanent improvements, but we have to look at, I want to look at the whole picture of what's happening with our operating funds. So that's all. So I just might want to, I might not be ready March 20th. So we can move on and talk about the amount we think we want to do, but let's make sure we have good, a good number of where we're ending up.
Okay. So, so I think Mary Kay's suggestion is a good one. If we, let's assume that this will be a non-issue.
Yeah.
If that is the case, would we be ready to move forward on March 20th with the resolution based on the discussion tonight about what we think is an appropriate amount? So let's, if we set it aside...
Let's do the amount, and then, yes.
Right, if we set aside, if there were no issue of concern, what do we think would be appropriate? And then we can pull the trigger on that either March 20th or some future date.
Right, because it's not, because it's not going to collect till January, so there's really no, there's no reason, other than we have to amend something later, but it's not a big deal.
I'll be picking an amount or a millage.
A millage.
And if I understand what inside millage is, that's going to, that will continue to, you think it will go up or down based on the property values?
It grows property values, right now it's about $524,000.
Right, and it could, it could decrease.
Could reduce, yeah.
But it's not likely, but...
Sorry.
So, and just, we had this conversation at capital planning, but reminder that can't be, you can't unwind this once it's done, you've committed those funds to PI. So in consideration of that number...
Those funds, you can unwind. We could change the inside mills to go back to the general fund, yes.
But what I'm, what I'm saying is, those expenses are locked there.
Yes, or unless the board were to take action, again, to reverse the inside millage.
So, in thinking of that, I would, my recommendation is, be on the conservative side of a number that you are very comfortable that we spend annually.
Right. So that, you know, a mil, Candy, is about 524,000, something like that, this year. Our, I love, we actually go back to the slide that has the five-year forecast and the amount that we are transferring to permanent improvements. Did you, there you go, that's what I wanted to see. So that line, permanent improvements, that's, we budgeted for this year 1.5 million, next year 1 million, then 1.5, 1.25, 1.25. So, 1 mil, about 522 mills would be a little bit over a million dollars. They're still within the amount that we planned on spending for permanent improvements. So in my mind, we're in that range, 1, 1 and 1/2, or 2 mills, that's, you know, worth discussing.
And we can change this millage rate, like, on an annual basis, on a semi-annual basis?
I don't think we want to change it too frequently.
Right, but I'm saying, if we had to...
If you recall at the permanent improvement committee meeting, Rick Maniloff made a comment about, once the money goes into the permanent improvement fund, you can't get it out.
Right.
He did not address, once you move the inside millage, can you move it back? I don't have an answer for that. I, I don't think that anyone has done that, so again, I don't know what the process for that would be. He did not address that.
Will you do a follow-up on that, just so we can confirm? My understanding was that it, it just takes a board vote to, the same type of resolution that moves the mills would move it back to the general fund, but let's just double-check and make sure that we're understanding that correctly. But I think we should probably assume, Phil, that we're, we want to go with a fairly conservative, we wouldn't want to budget the whole 1.5 million that's coming out of the inside mills.
Sure, sure.
Well, let me just take this back for a minute. First of all, Candy, that presentation was refreshingly complete. As a board member, I really appreciate that you anticipated the information that we would want, because it gave me time to think about this before coming to the meeting, so thank you. And Mary Kay, I, sitting next to you, feel viscerally your concern, and I get that.
This is the, the auditor and me, I mean, 6.01, which is your, you know, is the biggest, is the most important line on your five-year forecast, so I want to make sure we got a good number that we're starting with, okay?
So let's, let's make sure we get that figured out. That, aside from this conversation, I just want to, my feeling after the capital planning meeting was, one, we all need to be prepared to communicate to the community that we are not at the 20-mill floor as a district. So what they read in the newspaper about other districts that did this, or some districts then found that it was unconstitutional because it did force a tax increase, we all need to be ready to communicate that that is not what we're doing here, that the taxes won't change in any capacity. It's really just how we are allocating funds. And it's a statement on behalf of the board, I feel, in response to strong community sentiment that we need to maintain our facilities. You know, there was, there was strong expression that we need to address the most critical facility in the district, which is CFIS, which we're doing a great job doing, and then we need to allocate funds so that we take care of all district facilities moving forward. And I feel taking this action shows that we're prioritizing that feedback. In terms of the actual, oh, the other thing that I think, that I learned, which I didn't know in the capital planning meeting, was that the state would require a district to receive state funds for any sort of project, to satisfy a 0.5 mil in PI for 23 years, presumably to... to satisfy a .5 mill in PI for 23 years, presumably to then maintain whatever that project was that the state helped participate in. So there are a lot of signs to me that show that this is just us being good stewards of the community's money when we're ready to do it.
Can I jump in there a little bit too? Because the other piece I thought was really interesting is we looked at a list of 20 comparable districts, and whether they had designated PI millage. And we were one of four on that list to have no designated PI millage, whether it's through a voted levy or through inside mills. So it, to me, it underscores many boards of education by policy setting the importance of having dedicated funds to maintain public facility, public funds that are invested in our school facilities.
That's a good point. And then the other thing I was going to say is, I don't ever see this district spending, going back to a state, steady state of spending $400,000 a year. I think we clearly know that's not being a good steward. So one mill is $500,000. I agree with Catherine's sentiment that we want to start off, and, you know, I don't think we want to do all of the $1.5 that we currently have budgeted. But I could be comfortable with one and a half mills, which gets us, you know, a little beyond the $500,000, a little bit closer.
A little less than half of what we budgeted. But that, and what we budgeted isn't the $2 million that this, all of our studies have said that we probably need.
But we do, we are going to have one brand-new building. You know, yes, we have some really old ones, but.
Right, but those formulas are independent of that, because you have, you have to put money aside for future repairs that are larger, so.
And we still have a backlog.
Yeah, we didn't address the backlog.
So we've been spending two years, we've been spending one and a half million just for the last. And three years ago, basically, three years ago, we learned we need $2 million a year, and we have a $10 million backlog. So we haven't been spending even $2 million yet, which intuitively tells me we've still got significant backlog, even with the intermediate school being addressed.
Okay, so.
And you can be conservative of your approach to moving inside millage to PI, because you have other options as well. So, again, at that Capital Planning meeting, where we discussed the opportunity for the Fund 70, where you can, again, make transfers from general fund into a fund for projects, but you can get that money back if you complete the project and have money left over. So that gives you a little bit more flexibility. And then also know that a PI levy can be combined with an operating levy. That makes me learn the ballot. And also, it can be looked at in terms of your bond levy. The millage that you're currently collecting, that 8.15 mills for your bond levy, changes as you pay off your debt. So in about three or four years, there's a drop in the debt scheduled payments, which would result in less millage. So that's an opportunity to then say, we can leverage that drop, continue to collect that money, no new taxes, still collecting the same amount of money from taxpayers, but at this time, instead of directing the money to pay off debt, we would be directing it to permanent improvement.
So one of the things I like about taking action now as well is it helps, it helps us not have to have a complicated ballot initiative of a two.
Question or ask.
Question, ask. It makes our next ask more straightforward in terms of just being operating. And, you know, last time we went on the ballot, we had a lot of dialogue around, do you couple them together, do you split them out? Do you give people the choice, but if they choose one and not the other, we can't build a new building, but then not run the existing schools? And so, board action that moves us away from a two-issue ballot initiative, I think, is helpful in this capacity.
Except then that your operating is going to be more, since you moved money. So you have, you'd have to explain this, like, oh my God, they want, you know, 7.9 again, or they need eight, or whatever. So you have, it's a trade-off.
Well, we've already planned on allocating this money down.
Right, but yeah, but we haven't, we have no, I mean, I have no idea what the millage we're going to need for operating, you know?
No, no, I know. That's a different. But we have one and a half million, and no one's talking about moving into inside mill, moving inside mill that exceeds what we've already budgeted for permanent improvement. So we just have to be cognizant when we're planning next time around of that conversation.
To me, like, I would feel like real comfortable at one mill. And if we can then actually move, like, I don't, I don't worry about taking the money back, or if we can then, we're sure that we can take, like, we say one after some, we each want to change that back to, or we want to do 1.5 mills, we want to change that back to 0.5. If we're allowed to do that, then I'd be fine with it at 1.5. But if we can't do that, then I'd be kind of having more to think about.
Or P the one. So that's a big question for us to get answered, is what's, what's involved? If it's more than just a board resolution?
Again, I'm not sure what the process is. I posed that question to our, our council. But think of it in terms of, and this is where I'm going with it, it may not simply be a resolution, because you cannot simply take, I'm sorry, voted millage and make it PI. You have the option to take the inside millage, because it's unvoted. You can move it to PI. I don't think. Yeah, I don't think you have the same.
Yeah, but we're not talking about that.
For above four and a half, then.
So I don't think you could, but I'm thinking in terms of, can you take PI millage and move it?
It's still inside mills designated to PI?
No, it's no longer an inside mill, it's a PI mill. So can you take a PI mill?
I thought that was a, a long-term.
Well, let's not guess, let's get the, let's get the answer. But I think the other thing that you're speaking to, Candy, is that there are multiple ways and combinations of ways to approach how we build a dedicated PI fund, which is one of the things I think we're trying to achieve. So we have a reliable source of funding for maintenance that we know we're going to have. And then also growing that fund. You know, we've identified that we are growing it, we're moving in the right direction. We may not quite be there yet, and we may need to look at future levies that help us get to that $2 million mark that we think we need on a steady state. So I think the proposal here is kind of a baby step where we are using one element that's at our disposal to allocate dedicated funds that's within a comfortable conservative amount that we know we're going to spend, regardless of whether we're missing $2 million in revenue, or whether we pass a levy. And I think around a mill, we're very comfortable that we are going to need to put that into our facilities. And so I think that's what we're talking about. And then we may augment that inside millage with the O70 fund, or even with a PI levy that then gets us up to the $2 million mark. So it's a multifaceted approach. And this is one element of it. Probably, we can be most conservative with this element of it. But I think it's a good step in the direction of saying, by policy, we are saying to the community that the maintenance of our facilities is a priority for the district, and we will be allocating funds toward that maintenance that we feel is appropriate. So I think the Ohio School Construction Commission piece really resonated with me, that if we were benefiting from state money, we would be required to have at least half a mill. And we don't benefit from state money, so we don't have the requirement. But I think that definitely underscores that when you build new buildings, when you have buildings that are funded by public taxes, you need to have maintenance programs in place and funds.
It was interesting to me, because we did benefit from state money of $600,000.
Yeah, but it's not from there.
But it came from the state budget, the capital budget, and not the OFCC school budget. So they didn't impose this on us.
Right. So, does anybody else have a comment? Maybe we come back to this in March when we have, you know, some answers, and if we have any other inputs that we need to know.
I think we've had a good discussion, and now we're kind of down to what's the number? What's the number, and what's the flexibility around the number? And, you know, we'll know more about, probably about property tax collections, and is there, is there a jump ball or not?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lucat.
And in the meantime, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate.
Not I, but one question. Do you know if, if some down the road, we do a PI levy? Like, usually we do our operating as continuing. Can you do a continuing PI levy? Because I see most districts have them for a set time, and then they replace them.
You can do either one. It can be for a period of time. In fact, one of the things we may want to look at with the master plan is doing like a 10-year PI levy that allows us to front-load a lot of those projects and get a group of projects done, so. Or a bond issue, that's a can of worms.
Yeah.
Let's save that conversation.
Cops. Cops funds and.
No, I'm not talking about that. No, I'm talking about a PI levy that would allow us to collect something like $5 million over a period of time that allows us to then.
Oh, you mean do it at the end, not, but you could also do it and leverage it at the front and cop grants and do it that way.
Right.
I, that's, I don't think I.
Cops grants. I don't think there's any support for that.
No, okay, good.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lucat. That was really, really wonderful. So now, can I have a motion for consent agenda items? 7A through I?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Hunt, do you have anything you want to speak to? Ms. Lucat, would you please take the ball?
I'm sorry, I missed the motion.
I moved.
Sharon.
Mrs. Bruce?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Kansinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Can I have a motion for superintendent's recommendations, 8A and B?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Hunt, would you like to speak to these?
Item 8A is a recommendation to contract the Spectrum services in the district for this recommendation brought to the board, because we typically approve an annual contract. For, but not this year, we are eligible for a rate with this, and a five-year contract leads to about $13,000 savings over five years. So the recommendation is to enter into that agreement. And then item B are change orders, the recommendation for the change orders, O23 and O24, as previously discussed.
And just to call out, all of those things that Carrie walked us through, the net change is $4,306. So there were a lot of, that was a great example of where we had some increases, but we also achieved some value engineering as well. So it's not a, both those change orders didn't really result in much of a change to our budget. Okay, Ms. Lucat, would you please?
And just a reminder, you still have access to this worksheet of the, and I added the PCI log in there, and I added those change orders. So if you want to see the specific detail of how they add up, there are additional tabs on that worksheet that was shared with you.
So that we could find in our Google Drive?
Yes. So it should still be in your Google Drive. You still have access to it, and it was updated with the two change orders for this evening. I didn't call them out to you, but you still have access to them. And we'll continue to do that as we add them on there. And as Carrie provides updated worksheets, I'll try to get them in there too, so you can see the whole picture.
Okay. I happened to look at it today, and thank you for doing that. Would you mind just?
There wasn't much of a change, so.
No, no, but still, I appreciate that it takes some time to go through, and they're no longer potentials, they're now actuals. And I'm sad that you did that work. But would you mind just emailing us? We usually get everything on Friday, but if it comes after that, that you've had a chance to update this, why don't you just let us know when it's updated?
Okay.
So we know when to go look at it.
We'll do it.
That would be great.
Yeah, one question though. Has Spectrum been the customer or the vendor for a long time?
Is there any other discussion?
And just to clarify, that's, those are fiber lines that are running internally in the district.
Ms. Lucat, would you please take the ball?
Mrs. Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mr. Kansinger?
Yes.
I have a motion for treasurer's recommendation, 9A.
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Lucat, do you want to speak to this?
Uh, yeah, we have two generous donations to the district. Henry and Michelle Spain made a donation for the Life Act. It's a pass-through donation, but it's also subject to a match, and then those services do benefit our children. And also, an executive desk and in-kind donation made to the district.
I would just like to add, Maria, Ms. Bruce, that is Harry Cash's wife. If you guys don't know, Harry was a board member who passed away three years ago, I think.
Well, be sure to thank them on behalf of the board. And I guess we're ready to take the ball.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mr. Kansinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruce?
Yes.
Other business? Does anyone have any other business that they would like to introduce?
Just two items. First, if you're bored, thanks Monday, it's a busy night. We're going to meet with the Shagrin Ball's Boosters at 5:30 to talk about the Tiger Perk Coffee Shop. There's a donor recognition celebration in the Innovation Center at 7:00 PM. And then South Russell Village Council at 7:30, to do the trifecta. We will update South Russell on the SRO. So I've got Mike Baldwin prepared to go there. Lisa Shannon will back me up in case I can't get from one place to the other, so.
Do you know what the Innovation Center designation, is that, has that already been created physically?
Yeah, it's hanging in there.
They're going to add it after the meeting.
Mary Kay, so she saw it.
I saw it last night.
In the event that donor name is inaccurate, what are we to do?
I would just communicate with the foundation.
Okay. So, do you want to give a little more, maybe tell I know you went to an foundation meeting? So this is the wall.
Yeah, the wall of all the, all the donors, I believe, right?
That supported the Innovation Center?
Yeah, so I think.
The financial donation.
Right, so I don't know a lot about it. I know they're having it on Monday, 7 o'clock, and I believe all the donors are invited. And then they, they're going to have a middle school representative use the IC. That happens to be my daughter. I explained earlier that she's going to be presenting it on Monday. So she was thrilled. And there's gifts that have been made in the Innovation Center.
Right.
Well, if I walk out during her presentations, just because I'm going to go to South Russell to support officers.
And I have a music lover for a minute. And Bob, are you scheduled to have the SRO also present? Does your grand council?
I've emailed the mayor a couple of times. I haven't, then we're on agenda yet.
And I believe you are going to talk with us about maybe a tour?
Yeah, that was item number two. So if, having to schedule a tour with Carrie, usually it works better after 4 o'clock, just because the contractors are off-site. So we could look at board meeting day, try to do before a board meeting, if that interests you, or if you'd like to set it up another day.
Do you have any other tours that are, I know, I guess my concern is that while I want to go see it, and I think it has been a while since we've been in there, it is a little bit of a disruption, right, to the contractors. They have to clean up the areas, and so do you have any other tours that are happening that we could go on the same day, or around the same time?
I don't have anything scheduled currently.
I heard the Realtors were going through sometimes.
Lori's got that, but I think that number is going to push.
Too many people?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, then, I would be available for the next board meeting. Although that's going to be a long meeting.
March 20.
Yeah. Well, I'd like to get in there, but soon. Would it be possible to get in there this Friday afternoon?
I can't do this Friday.
Next Friday, the 15?
I've got something for five minutes.
I think next Friday's going to be bad for me.
Before the next, yeah, before the next board meeting, bad? Because I think that may be, was that one the 10-year one?
Yeah, but we could, we're going to reduce the board council a close.
Yeah, but we could, we're going to resume the board conference, we're closed. I mean, if other people want to do it, that's fine. Do we want to do it before the next one?
If you want to do Friday, I'm down there for an OAC meeting, I could do it afterwards.
You'll be there?
I'm there anyways. So I could do, if some of you want to come, 3 o'clock, Chris?
Yeah, as long as we prepare a agenda, then one of us could step out of the event.
Yeah, so if you want to come, 3 o'clock on Friday, that works, and then we can do a group before the board meeting as well.
All right, I have to go. Yeah, come Friday, so I work three times.
Friday at 3 is not working.
This Friday or next Friday?
This Friday.
Friday's, Friday's not working.
So how about-
But you were just there, right?
I was there until 2.
Okay. Okay, well, it looks like Phil and Sharon and Mary Kay could go this Friday. I'm going to be picking up my son at RIT, so.
So do you want to schedule a 5, a 5 o'clock on the 20th as well?
Well, you don't, you don't need to do a special one for me, I can, I can loop it in around a construction meeting. So I would do that, and then I'll see if there's another time that's convenient. Maybe I could join the Realtors next week, just me.
I'll just confirm the number.
Okay.
So what time, Friday?
3.
Friday at 3?
I'll jump on a number towards 11.
Okay. Good, it'll be exciting. I can't believe drywall is going up. I mean, it's going to look so different from the last time we were there, we were on steel ore, right? With the spikes.
90 degrees.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Well, now it'll be enclosed, so it's probably warm in there.
It's warm.
Yeah.
If you are feeling up to it, you can actually climb up into the ceiling of the auditorium and see the student graffiti and what they've got up there.
Is the beam that was signed visible anywhere any longer? No, it's all, but you could, can you show us where it is?
Sure.
Okay. All right.
If I can just add one thing to the other business. While we were meeting, I asked Rick Maniloff the following question.
Okay.
The board wants to know if we move-
Hang on, Candy.
If we move-
She got an update from Rick Maniloff with the answer to her question.
I did, too, he said absolutely. Yours sounds more detailed than mine.
Well, I posed the question that the board wants to know if we move inside millage to PI, can it at some time in the future be moved back? Not the funds, but the millage. The response I got was, the purpose of inside millage can be changed at the board's discretion.
Okay.
So there's your response. So it can be moved from current expense to PI, which is what we're talking about doing, then back to current expense. Of course, but he does add, of course, as you suggest, once a tax is collected for a particular purpose and deposited into the appropriate fund, like the PI, Fund 3, the money actually collected must be used for that purpose.
Right.
So there's your response.
So you're, that's not our intent.
You would have a leg, like, if you decide, like, okay, we built this up, oh, we don't need it anymore, you could do a resolution, and it would probably be the next January.
You'd have to go through the cycle of collections and everything, but yeah, that's really nice to know. And I think that our intent is not to be, you know, shuffling back and forth, but that, I think, provides a nice safety net, that if there was a dire circumstance, that we needed that millage for operating for some reason, we could recapture it. So that may change your opinion, Mary Kay, as well, about moving on March 20 with the-
I still want, I still need, I just want to make sure where our numbers are. There wasn't, I want to make sure the numbers, it's just timing differences, and there's not an error or something.
Right.
I'm, I'm happy that after, when I want to see my, I could point out the spreadsheets what I'm talking about.
No, you, you talked us through it at the last meeting, so I know.
I know, but I kind of got some deer in the headlights looks. Okay.
Okay, any other business? Any other, other business? All right, good. And the next meeting is Wednesday, March 20, at 6 o'clock in the Sands Community Room. And can I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Mrs. Bruce?
Yeah.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsinger?